Ladies and gentlemen, I happen to be reading the Lafayette Advertiser which I subscribe to last week. And I noticed that an outstanding businessman from our community was receiving a significant honor in that city. And it was an honor that very few people in business in Lafayette receive there, much less somebody whose business headquarters are located here in the city of Eunice. The Junior Achievement of Akadiana had a ceremony at the Akadiana Center for the Arts this past weekend. And enlisted new members in the Akadiana Business Hall fame. There were three autories primarily named as laureates. And one of them was J. Eddie Swallow, Sunland Construction. You know, I think with the 24-hour news cycle, we have a penchant to concentrate sometime on negative things and forget about the positive things that we have or others. I took a special interest in this particular award because Mr. Eddie Swallow received his BS in Civil Engineering from UL in 1963, which was only a couple of years after I had gotten my degree from the same school. In fact, Eddie was a student there at the same time that Mr. Jerry DeVity, right across from me, was a student there. And we all had one thing in common. We all had to clean up after our fellow students got through eat. In the case of Eddie and Jerry, it was in the chawal. And in my case, it was at Newman House where I was washing dishes for 50 men. After Eddie Swallow got his degree in Civil Engineering, he joined the US Army from 1963 to 65, from which he was honorably discharged. And about 1974, after working as an engineer primarily in the pipeline area, construction area, he founded his own business here, Sunland Construction, Inc. I think it's important that we recognize that these are local people who started out on the ground here and now provide employment to hundreds and in some cases thousands of people who are mostly from this area, at least the general area of southwestern Indiana. And in my view, there is nothing that you can provide to an individual as more valuable to him than a good job. And that's what the recognition in Lafayette was about. And that's what I'd simply like to recognize on behalf of all members of the city council, the mayor, the chiefs, all members of the Eunice City Government, as well as the citizens who are here tonight, and a certificate of commendation to Mr. J. Eddie Swallow for his recent induction into the Junior Achievement of Akadiana's Annual Business Hall fame. As the founder of Sunland Construction, our congratulations and best wishes. Mr. Swallow?
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. I don't know if I have as much to say about myself as Jack. Anyway, I moved to Eunice in 1973 and spent one year working for Ashi Construction. And at the time, saw an opportunity to go out and do some of the work that Mr. Ashi was not interested in doing. And so started Sunland Construction, which will be 39 years in a couple of weeks, first of June. And started out with three employees. Today, we have 2,800 plus employees scattered and working in 17 different states. We have 13 offices in seven states, all the way from South Carolina, Alabama, Louisiana, Texas, New Mexico, Colorado, North Dakota, so on. And basically, most of the stuff we do is high-pressure and actual gas. But we do have some portion of our work that we... We have an electrical contractor out of Abilene, Texas that does industrial-type electrical work. A little bit of commercial, but primarily industrial. And so anyway, certainly the people engaged in oilfield construction today have plenty of work and it's really a shortage of manpower, skilled manpower. I think we also, we got people here in town like Louisiana Crane, H. Brown Crane, Slick Construction, Tanner Construction, Sunland. And I think we all suffer from not enough skilled folks to do it. Anyway, having said that, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Swallow's message to the young people that are going to be watching this meeting on TV is they're coming through high school. They all never opt to success is not put a coat on the top. Learn how to weld, where you can become a good enough welder to weld on these high-pressure pipelines. Learn how to do the skills like carpentry and electricity and mechanical work that are always in demand, right here in our town, they're in demand. I mean, look around, you had the average age. I'm not criticizing my good friends that I call to fix my plumbing lines when they break, but most of them are getting up around my time in life. And we need some young people coming behind them to do that kind of work. I believe deeply in vocational education. And I think we need to encourage our young people to go that route. That's what a job do. Thank you.
Thank you.
From some citizens within the community about some issues that has been taking place at the park. And some of it started out with the park being closed and then something about some officers had, or one officer in particular had been coming to the park. And from what I understand, he lives across in the back way of the park. And he comes through the back of the park. And there are people out there sitting at the park. And one particular time, I had been told that people were at the park and this particular officer came over to the park and chained the park and shut it down.
Yes, he did.
And I have some photos where it was sent to me that there was a crime scene tape that was taped all around the basketball court. It was taped all around the front portion of the park. I saw this for myself once they sent me the pictures. So I just didn't know, at the time that the park was closed, I spoke to the mayor and the mayor said that the only time he knew of the park being closed was on the Monday morning to be cleaned up because they had some broken bottles.
And I'd like to inject it, the community cleaning it up.
Right, there was some individuals from the community that had come and cleaned the park up. But they told me that it was chained prior to the mayor even knowing about it. And one of the things I want to bring up is any time the park has to be closed, I would think that the mayor has to be notified. No one can just go over to the park and chain it and shut it down without notifying the mayor. So that day, the park was shut down and chained. I think they went over and cut it, cut the chain off? The chain had to be cut off?
Simpson, I'm not even aware of this.
Well, I think the chain had to be cut off. It had to be cut off because the chain was put on. So I was just trying to get to the bottom of it. And I don't know if the chief knows anything about this or...
Sure, I'd like to address this issue.
Chief, you want to stand where they can hear you, please?
Oh, sure. What I can do is have these pictures so the city council can look at each one in particular. And I also did contact the city attorney after I spoke with the mayor reference to the situation. We had a problem, numerous complaint, that there was a lot of broken bottles, beer bottles at the park. That they were afraid their kids went there. So myself, I think the mayor did go that day as well. Councilman Miller and I, we drove out there as well to verify. Looked at the facility and they had numerous, numerous beer bottles broken. I did take pictures, also found a used condom that was on the park, which is on Paul Bar. This is your park. So I did leave the mayor, we found that the audit that was exposed, out of concern for the safety of your kids and the public. We had discussions on the, from the city hall along with the reg department. And it was a reach too that on behalf of the safety of the citizen, what we best need to do is to close the park down until you get it taken care of. So it was addressed and with the mayor's approval, is that correct, mayor?
That's correct.
So it was closed down for the sake of the public's safety. Later on, we did find out, I did contact with the city attorney, make sure that it was not obligated. So the mayor decided to close it down, which he said it was his decision. He did make the decision. And we went out there and we did put tape on it, the crime scene over there. Yes, and it stayed.
Crime scene.
So the park was closed down for the need of knowledge?
Put one in jail, that guy got them boys living.
The park was closed down because the mayor was concerned the safety as well as everybody else. And when a certain citizen did agree to go and clean it up, which was no problem, once that was taken care of, the park was reopened. But it was only because of the fact that we felt that your kids who go to this park need to be there and we take care of it in a safe manner, for their own sake and protection. We're not here to disrupt, nor misuse the park. But because of our concern, we had received calls, particularly as far as the broken bottles on concrete, which let kids go walk around the house of barefoot and get cut.
Why might we go over there? Why might we go standing on the back section, watch to see where everything going over there? We should be at the other part where they call.
Why you the one time? Y'all see the prank to you?
Tattoo man, tattoo, you know what it's all, you know what we're talking about. Why you just standing in the back section?
My question to the chief about the park is, before the park was closed, right, the mayor notified. Did he know at that time that the park was being cleaned?
The mayor made the decision.
Let me clarify something.
Right, he made the decision Monday morning.
I made the decision to close the park until we could get the park cleaned. That afternoon, Sylvester, y'all came, met with me, agreed. They said, even though we didn't do it, we will clean it. I went to the city barn, I got some rakes and some bags. I met, met them out there, they had a bunch of people out there. Matter of fact, they had to laugh, I don't remember who it was, but when the kids would come, they would tell them, either you come to work or go. So they got it all cleaned up and then we reopened it. But they did have a lot of glass and they had a lot of glass in the kids' area, which was concerned.
And that was the Sunday or the Monday, mayor?
That was Monday.
Monday morning, when you decided to close?
No, no, it wasn't, it was on Friday. It was Friday. And this alleged incident happened on Sunday, on Saturday night, right?
Okay, so you went Friday.
So I was not notified that the park...
Being chained on the Sunday.
I was notified Friday.
It was notified, the mayor was notified on the Friday that the park, he closed it for a couple hours. But then when the park was chained the other time,
I notified. Changed the park.
You don't know who had, you have no idea.
My, my.
Hey, tattoo and the man that run the store. They chained more than, and chained it, okay?
You want to defend him, that's why you run down and chain.
And he don't have nothing to do with the park, the man, so... So I was probably running on you.
Okay, I did, I think, well, that answered my question, that the mayor...
The mayor was aware of it, yes, mayor.
On the Friday, but on the Sunday, he has no idea about the chain being...
I have no ideas for a idea of the chain being, but it made after they were reopened.
So he just clarified that any time the park is closed, the mayor has to be called and notified.
Only the mayor decided to call down, that is correct.
No one else is to go and chain the park.
That is correct, absolutely.
I wonder one day, what is, now what is my, when you're off duty, he should be secured, playing, playing security at the store. He got, he on duty to come harass the people. Because he wasn't on duty. We are taxpayers, but I say what though? Mike can't come close my private parking park inside my backyard. But I was saying for these folks who don't have nowhere to go and buy, and entertain for, for down children. But I got my own private park. But the lot, you don't have that advantage. And it's unfair because I'm a taxpayer. You, okay? You let Mike, what do you want him to do?
He has one kind of chief.
Ask him, you go one kind of chief.
So the mayor, Mr. Thompson, hi, nation.
I think I have someone to sign a public...
We have, brother Miller's going to talk, let's talk one at a time. He's got his own card and no one, I appreciate you being here and I appreciate your concern. But when everybody's talking and buzzing, I appreciate that. Actually, you're not allowed to say anything, you didn't fill out the cards, Sylvester. Okay, please, bro, you want to come up now?
Oh, yes, sir. Now, having to meet me here, Mr. Pedersen. Miller, president of the National Action Network. And I have the Constitution here. And I've been in Eunice just about all my life. But there are some rogue cops, not all officers. But there have been nine citizens that are right. For instance, on Palm Sunday, they in the park. Now, the park is there because yours truly and a few other African-Americans brought charges against the city of Eunice for facilities. And we got the park. And we aren't going to let a group of, and all these officers, we have good officers. But there's about four officers who are rogue cops. And they're denying people their right to assemble, their right to free speech, their right to park in an area. And you approach them. I went and came up here to bond two sisters out of jail. And one of the female police officers came in, what you want? And I said, miss, you don't approach. And then she, she said, well, I arrested them, but I haven't charged them yet. I said, you mean to tell me that you go put handcuffs on somebody? Then you bring them up here and then make up your mind? Now, come to this Constitution. Freedom of assembly, freedom of speech. It's being denied here by several cops. And the tattoo man is leading the way. Now, on Palm Sunday, on Palm Sunday, Frank, I'm an equal opportunity. Black or white, if they wrong, they wrong. Michael, Michael. But here we are with these rogue cops that are doing something. For instance, on Palm Sunday, these people in the park with their families barbecuing, having a good time, this man from Sunrise hollered across the way, turn the duty down, so and so. So guys, capon, capon, capon. He came out there with squad cars and drew pistols. Something going to happen here. That's a young man who was in his mama's garage, in her yard, sleep. Arrested for DWI, sleep in his car, in his mom's yard. Now, I have some recommendations that I want to say now. I'm fixed to sit, I'm fixed to sit down. What I want to say is, I want to say this. You can arrest me if you want. We request that a citizens committee be organized to investigate and study the behavior, the action of the Eunice Police Department. Investigate the officers living in Sunrise for their illegal harassment of individuals in that area. Request an appeal before the Civil Service Committee. We want to go to Civil Service Board, we're going to have a committee to go to Baton Rouge and deal with the Inspector General. Have them to come up here and investigate your department.
Yes, yes.
All right? We, citizens of Eunice, and I say citizens because some of the poor whites are being abused, just as well as blacks. But they don't say anything, they just take it. But I've been here 77 years, I'm ready to walk out and move. He would have cut me down. I'm trying to save, I'm trying to save somebody some lives.
Trying to save.
But I'm telling you, somebody, and I understand. But I want you to know, there's no fear. We have enough of it. Directing you, the chief, to lead your department and tattoo man,
And AJ Frank.
And AJ Frank. On insult to the police forces across Eunice, Louie, there. Thank you very much and God bless all of you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think one of the primary roles that the city government has is to hear what people are thinking about how things are working. The police chief is an elected official. He's entitled to respect as an elected official. And I'm going to, I'm going to hope that we were all listening to what was said tonight and that appropriate action will be taken. I want to speak to one of the points that was raised because it's a point that affects every citizen in this town, black or white. And I know all of y'all are here tonight, I'm speaking to the choir because y'all don't throw broken bottles at people's place of business or in parks or in driveway at all. But take it from me, I frequent that nice new coffee shop we got in town. That's where the young people, the college people and all like to go. Every Monday morning, I can tell you that that parking lot that used to be the old Kirsten lot that they didn't allow all of us to use in the city for nothing, is going to be covered with broken beer bottles. And this is after, as y'all all know, city workers under the direct supervision of the mayor installed some state-of-the-art trash barrels. They got to walk from those bars by the trash barrels to throw the, to throw the thing on the ground and break them. I can tell you, y'all know where I live across from Highland. And poor school kids got the same thing facing them after every weekend. I got a little collection site right where the four-way stop sign is. Picked the beer bottles up last night. Nobody here tonight does that. Somehow or other, we got to give the gospel out to our fellow citizens, particularly the young ones. I was young once and I did things I shouldn't have done. To just do that one thing for the rest of peace and order-loving people, which is the majority of the people in this town. And don't litter their yards with broken beer bottles or... While you're at it, let's mention these parks, which I agree there's nothing more important to civilization than good parks. And everybody ought to have access to them. And I feel that at the bottom of my heart. But we know that in Mr. Miller's ward up on Happy Hill, when he put in a lot of effort to get a nice park for the kids to come play and some people took it on themselves to get in there and trash it. There's no benefit that could possibly be realized by anybody doing that. And that's not today, we got that problem. My brother and I spent half a day cleaning up the bathrooms in the baseball parks. The old baseball park. Long they'd come in in the third inning and it looked like somebody had thrown a grenade. Targeted all over creation and everything. We have been short in that department. And that's not a black or white situation, it's Eunice. And I'd like to ask the help of all of y'all here tonight to watch that door to the park treated with respect. Because it is your park and you want it to be treated with respect. Where you can go out there and not have to move the bikes, broken bottles and trash.
Well, I only park with no restrooms.
You're not the only park with any restrooms. There's no park with the exception of the athletic park, baseball park on Tucum.
I think, I think what the main issue is at this point, some of the issues that Mr. Miller spoke about and what's on the agenda is with the park and the issues that are happening at the park. As a council, we are the appointing body along with the mayor. And what happens is we each have an obligated duty, whether it's affecting your Scott community, whether it's affecting Junior, Mr. Ferguson, myself or Mr. Miller. This is what the bottom line is. We are the appointing authority. And when we hire officers and we put them in place and if there is something going on within the city amongst those officers that you keep constantly hearing the same thing over and over from different people, different places, different times, there's got to be something, what's going on in your department. And if you see it from different areas and hear it from different people at different times, then there must be an issue somewhere. If it's the same officer whose name that keeps coming up, then it can't be everybody in the city saying the same thing. Now, at one time, it's been brought to the council prior that we had, before you were elected, I came here. So I don't want you to think that, oh, because you're the chief, I'm picking on you or any of your officers in particular. When Mr. Fontenot was chief, I brought some of the same issues up when he was chief. Couple of the same officers who are there now had some issues at that time. And each time that I brought something up to the council, it seems as though it has gone this far. Till now, we're at a point where, what do we do? Like, what do we do? How do you correct this? How do you work this out where it's peaceful? And at the same time, what's the resolution? Is what I'm basically asking. I've come, like, what is the resolution for this?
When a police officer or any other person is hired to work in the city of Eunice, the council has nothing to do with that, if I remember you telling me that. That is, if it's a police officer, he's recommended by the chief and you are the appointing authority. The council has no say-so and who gets hired?
No, the chief is, the chief is not the appointing authority.
No, no, the mayor is the appointing authority. The council has nothing to do with hiring but two people in this city. The council has nothing to do with hiring but two people in this city, that is, the city attorney and the city clerk.
Under the Larson Act, the police chief can recommend people to be employed as police officers by the city, but the council has to approve that...
Who is the appointing authority, which is the question that was born up?
The appointing authority is, in some cases, is the mayor, but not when it comes to hiring a recommendation of the police chief. That has to be approved by the city council.
If Harvey's calling you correctly, I think that was an officer that was hired, we had maybe talked about, was already on the police force, and that's somebody that we were actually hiring.
Yeah, but is every officer that is now on the police force, have they come before this council?
Many of them have came.
Many of them have not. And if we're gonna have the responsibility, then we need to see these officers, we need to know who they are, and some of us may have doubt on some of them. I mean, if, if we have the responsibility, we need to know who they are. Or can't just hire them behind our backs and we don't know who they are.
Mr. Mayor, I've been on a council now going on nineteen years. I know previous chiefs and the current, whenever they brought somebody up for improvement, we always had a vote of the council. We have to approve. I think our problem comes in, is the Larson Act gives us the responsibility for approving, but we have absolutely no power to remove under civil services.
That is correct. The police recruits up to the office, and you have, chief, a lot of times, I'll tell him, I'll be honest with you, I'll forget, but I do, if he makes a recommendation, I normally approve it. And ask him to bring the people to the, so I'll take the responsibility.
We have possibly, several, several people got to follow civil service, we will write them up, we will recommend them, even termination, if so be it. But we have to take steps. It's not a quick step, we come in today, tomorrow, we get rid of this individual. Civil service does not allow this, it takes weeks, takes months. We just can't accuse someone due process as anybody else, they have the same right as anyone else. So, when the complaint is presented to me, we conduct our own investigation. And if it wants an outside source of investigation, we will also incorporate an outside source. I would say, please investigate, because I need someone from outside to investigate a criminal or matter that may have occurred. And once it's brought to my attention, you put it on paper, gives me something to work on. Just a word of mine is not sufficient enough to me start an investigation on someone, because to me, something that might have been inappropriate. You have to understand that we have certain rules we have to go by and follow. But those who are complaint, and we do investigate, they have something, we do discipline them. And that document is taken from here, transfers to my department, the mayor for his signature, and it goes to civil service board, and they have a right to the field and the hearing, just like anybody, due process. And they present the fact it's unfounded, they have a right to have return, overturn, just like anybody else.
Come back to us with some suggestions about maybe how we could get a procedure to get complaints to the chief in a form that is something he can deal with. And then, I think we'll all be better off.
Yes.
Because I have to say, again, I've been here a long time, I don't know that we've ever had such a formal system, and it may be time for us to try and develop. It would certainly give us a route that people would have confidence that they get to be heard or something, or correct. And I, I, you know, I just think, we can't lose by talking. That's what I'd like to suggest we look at between now and next meeting. Mayor, I'd like to suggest, and if I'd, if I'd be interested in serving on such a committee, submit their name, and then we can...
Good, thank you. I think we need to move on.